Commissioners work session to order. Good to see everyone today. I'm going to ask Commissioner Matthews to lead the pledge and have the invocation.
Stand, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let's pray. Father, we do thank you for this day. We thank you for this opportunity we have to come together this morning to discuss the business of this county. We just pray that you will be with each of the commissioners here. You would give us clear foresight as we talk about the various issues, the various directions that come before us. We thank you for these who are here today as well to support this process. We thank you for county government, leaders and workers and all they do daily for the citizens of this county. Just lift all these things up to you in your name.
Thank you, Commissioner Matthews. I don't know of any changes to the agenda, so we will proceed. First item up is discussion of the town of Fuquay Varina water purchase agreement. Good morning, Mr. Ward.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. I've got a couple of items to discuss this morning in preparation for the meeting on the 18th. The first is a water supply agreement with the town of Fuquay Varina. We've been working with the town for over 25, 30 years. We've been selling them water. They own 2 million gallons worth of capacity in our water treatment plant and have owned that for several years. As such, they came to us several years ago about wanting to buy more water from the county simply because of the way they're growing. And if you've been in that area in the last, well, 10 years, you know exactly what I'm talking about. They're bursting at the seams, as is Holly Springs and other towns in southern Wake County. So at that time, when they originally approached us, it was the county's position that we did not want to sell them any more water treatment capacity in our plant. We currently own 16 and a half million gallons of capacity in the plant, and we felt that it was wise to hold that capacity for all the future growth that we're now experiencing. And I think that was a wise move. And so they wondered that since then, they have entered into an agreement. It's my understanding with the town of Sanford, who's planning on expanding their plant to meet some of their long-term needs, the town of Fuquay. So they asked us if we were interested in selling them water on a short-term basis. This proposed contract is for 10 years. So we would sell them an additional, up to an additional 2 million gallons per day for the term of this contract for 10 years. And keep in mind, because they're not buying capacity in the plant, any amount of water or volume of water over 2 million gallons per day, they will pay a higher rate for that versus the 2 million that they own in the plant. So their town council approved this contract last Monday night at their board meeting, and it's here for your review, and I'm here to answer any questions you may have. We felt like, short-term, this was a good decision for the county. We have the capacity now to sell them this 2 million gallons per day. I personally don't think that there'll be many days when they reach that threshold. They currently purchase about a million and a half gallons a day from us on average. They also buy water from Johnston County and from the city of Raleigh. They have not terminated those agreements. So they'll still be buying water from them as well, is my understanding. So it just allows them. And quite frankly, in the past, in the summertime, there would be some days when they went above 2 billion gallons anyway. And we would allow them to purchase more water from us, from what we could stand. But we charged them the higher rate anyway. So this is just kind of formalizing that informal arrangement that we have. They also own 5 billion gallons worth of capacity in the Harnett-Wake transmission line. That's a line that we built about 25 years ago to serve Holly Springs and Fuquay Varina. It's a 36-inch water line that goes up Highway 401 and then turns on Pine Grove-Willbourn Road and goes up and crosses 42. It eventually goes all the way to Holly Springs, and it turns on 42 and goes to Fuquay. So if you're familiar with that area. So they own that capacity anyway in that line, and we have the ability and the capacity now to send them that water. So we felt like it was a good deal for the next 10 years, and we can certainly use the revenue. So I'll be glad to answer any questions the board may have about this 10-year agreement.
Anyone have any questions for Mr. Ward?
Do you have a question on that? The 2 million gallon capacity we're selling to town of Fuquay, are they able to turn around and sell some of that water back into Harnett County residents?
It would be difficult for them to move water back to us. I'm not saying it's not impossible, Commissioner Johnson, but I don't know hydraulically whether they could send that water back to us. But they don't have the means to store any water. You know, they don't have the storage capacity to set and hold water and then send it back to us.
What they get, they use what they get that day.
Absolutely. Yes, they would have to use that.
All right. Thank you, Steve.
Have they formalized their agreement with Sanford?
It's my understanding, Commissioner, whether it's been that they've entered into an engineering agreement with them, along with the town of Holly Springs, along with Chatham County and Pittsboro, with the town of Sanford, as Sanford plans to expand their plant. And that's all I know about the formal relationship right now, is they've started the engineering on that process. And the town has entered into that agreement with them. That's my understanding.
Thank you. Well, if that agreement falls through, they could potentially come back to us and ask for additional water or additional capacity?
It could. I think that Sanford is certainly planning on going forward, you know, with the Vinfast announcement and everything that's happening in that region right now. I don't see, I'm pretty certain that Sanford's going to go and expand their plant. Their plant's an 8-million plant now, I think, and they're expanding it to 30 million gallons, is my understanding. So something in that range. And so I think they will be dependent upon those partners participating in that upgrade. I know that Sanford received about $30 million from the ARPA funding that was granted or allocated by the legislators. So I know that's part of it. I know there was some Department of Commerce money involved with the Vinfast deal. So I think that Sanford is the plant that is expanding now, and those towns are looking to them for long-range water supply agreements. And that's really what started all this. For example, Holly Springs owns 10 million gallons in our plant, but they still are looking out. They use less than 3 million gallons a day. They buy all their water from us. So it kind of amazed me that they, I said, well, you know, you're not even using 3 million, but you're worried about 2060. And I'm not saying you don't need to plan. It's just hard to fathom sometimes how they would be interested in securing even more water. For example, Harnett County on its own, not that we sell anybody else, we use less than 7 million gallons a day. And that's going to increase. But, and that's, what, 125,000 people, of which we serve, let's say, 100,000, when you take out the city of Dunham. So, you know, Holly Springs would have to be, what, 200,000 people, or something like that, to even get close to that threshold. And they have industry there too now. Keep that in mind. That's a concern of theirs in any town, just like Fuquay going forward, having enough water to serve those industries. But we felt like, short-term, this was a good deal for us. It's not a long-term commitment in that 10 years, you know, it'll be before you know it. So.
Well, the reason I was asking about if the deal with Sanford fell through, if Fuquay can't figure out how to get water from Sanford to Fuquay, that could be a deal breaker.
I know their agreement with Raleigh is a, that's a recent agreement. It's my understanding that years ago, they had a formal arrangement with Raleigh, and that sort of went away. But they've entered into a new agreement with the city of Raleigh to provide them water on a long-term basis too, from my understanding. And they've still got their agreement with Johnston County. Johnston County, in fact, uses Highway 42 to provide them with water through that corridor as well. So they've got other options than us, Fuquay does. So, but it would not surprise me, like you said, if it fell through with Sanford, that they could come back to us in the past. And we may be in a different position, you know. We've got plans to build another water plant in Irwin, so who knows? You know, down the road, we may be in a better position to provide them with more water at that time. We just didn't feel like it was wise now with our single water plant and us needing the current capacity that we have available to serve our citizens and our growth that we're experiencing.
Thanks, sir. Any other questions for Ward? What's the pleasure of the board? Are we in agreement to move forward with this agreement with town of Fuquay? If it seems to be a consensus of the board to move forward with this agreement, so we'll put it on the consent agenda for Monday, Madam Clerk. All right. Next item, Mr. Ward, your grant application.
Okay, thank you. Happy to bring before the board a grant application and loan application in the total amount of $20 million to the North Carolina Department of Environmental Quality. This is for our North Hornet wastewater treatment plant expansion. As you all know, we were granted $3.8 million from the legislature as part of the ARPA funding. We've got the ability to get another $1.2 million in grant funds, which could bring that total to five. And also, we would like to borrow $15 million. Our cost by ourselves in this plant, keep in mind, this is a regional plant and a regional project. The total cost of the project is estimated to be around $65 million. Our cost is going to be pushing $30 million. So that's why we're asking for $15 million in loan too. The interest rate currently on that is 1.15% for 20 years. So it's a good opportunity to borrow these additional funds at these low interest rates, take advantage of those opportunities while we can, and make these improvements. So this application would allow us to do that. It requires a resolution from the board and signing off on the application. And Mr. Chairman, you would be the authorized representative for that grant application. I'll be glad to answer any questions you may have about the project, about the application, or anything.
Any questions for Mr. Ward about this?
See, that $15 million loan, the 1.5% for 20 years, is that fixed?
It's 1.15, so it's not 1.5. So 1.15 is my understanding at the current rate, and it is fixed for 20 years.
Has this already been to the LGC, or does it have to go to the LGC after we approve the resolution?
It will go later. Once the DEQ signs off on everything, we find out what the grant is. We'll find out in the fall. This application's due May the 2nd. So they'll make their awards, and at that time, they'll come back and determine exactly what we're eligible for, and then it would go before the LGC. They do make us submit some paperwork that Kimberly and I have already been addressing, like financial paperwork that goes in with the application. So there'll be some more of that for the LGC.
Well, what's the consensus of the board? Move forward with this grant application?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to motion that we move forward. I forgot we don't make a motion here, but I agree.
The consensus is move forward, so we will move that to the consent agenda for Monday night. Very good.
Thank you. And I will have the executed agreement for, from the town of Fuquay. I should get that today or tomorrow. So you'll be able to execute the executed agreement if the board approves. And also, I'll get everything as far as the final copy of the application that we need to get to the state on May 2nd, so that can be executed as well at the board meeting.
Okay.
Thanks, sir.
Next item. Mr. Hall, want to talk about conduiting access agreement with Cloudwise?
Yeah. First thing I want to clarify, apparently I copied my agenda request from the conduit agreement we had a couple of months ago. It should say tower agreement. If you look through the actual agreement, it is actually the tower side. So I apologize. I'll get that corrected. And this is something we actually discussed just about a year ago, back in June 2021, on them having access to the towers. And just, I went through some key points through all that process. Today, we're just, Cloudwise has finally got all the equipment and just really close to getting on the tower. So we need to get this agreement in place so they, you know, process and step to the next, move to the next steps in the process. So from my understanding, because of the length term of this agreement, we'll need to do a public hearing. And I guess today is just my request to kick off the 30 days to give the public enough notice about the public hearing and potentially put the public hearing on the, maybe the June 6th meeting agenda, and just to get this reviewed and get this approved, and so we can keep Cloudwise moving forward on the broadband access. And keep it pretty plain and simple. I don't know if you guys have any questions around where we're at on anything or what this means to us, but it's just for two towers, the Littleton Tower. or what this means to us, but it's just for two towers, the Lilinton Tower and the Oak Ridge Tower, which is the new tower in the northwest part of the county. And they'll come back for more here in the near future, and we'll add some more, probably just an addendum to this agreement to the others.
The tower, the, the both of these towers, how far out will this allow broadband to reach?
It's up to, it's between a two and two and a half mile radius, you know, if everything's kind of perfect. So, it's a pretty, pretty big extension there to cover that area around those towers. It just depends on foliage, you know, tree line, line of sight, and all those fun things to your house. So, we're hoping really this will be, this will be a big boom for the northwest, especially on the southern part of Lilinton, where broadband is not, not accessible.
Well, I know we've had some inquiries and some conversations in the past with Camp Agape.
Yes, sir.
Will this provide them?
Actually, they have figured out a way to move forward without us having to be involved any heavier. So, they are gonna build a fiber between this, the Oak Ridge Tower and Camp Agape. But Camp Agape, that's between Camp Agape and Cloudwise. That was the last official news that I had from Cloudwise on that, so that's awesome. Camp Agape should be able to meet their needs as they continue to expand their camp.
How much of the Lilinton area and the northwest Harney area will be left unserved after these towers?
It's still a pretty good, pretty good amount, honestly. You know, this is just the beginning of hitting these towers. There's still, and this is not, because of some of the limitations of wireless, this shouldn't interrupt anything with the great grant process. They should be, a lot of those areas that are underserved still. But I didn't bring any of the maps or anything to kind of show you the, the circles and the dots. I just was gonna put this forward and see if we can get it on the, get it on the agenda for the, gosh, the public hearing on the night, on the 6th, if I can get my notes up here and stop talking off the top of my head.
Any questions for Mr. Hall?
I have a question. Um, you said that we would have to have more than one public hearing?
I'm sorry?
I think I heard you say that we have to have more than one public hearing.
No, no, I'm sorry. No, we just have to have a 30-day announcement to the public hearing, and then we'll have the public hearing, hearing on the 6th.
Well, thank you for clearing that up.
Sorry.
Our hearing will be when?
My hope would be on the 6th, the June 6th meeting. That'll give us exactly 30, well, a little bit more than 30 days. I looked at Chris Appel, and he said, he said yes, so we're. Yeah, that's the next regular meeting after the 30 days expires.
Any other questions about this? All right, well, we'll put it on the agenda for June 6th then. Thank you, Mr. Hall.
Thank you.
Mr. McNeil. Do you wanna talk about the reclassification of some positions in the Sheriff's Department?
Yes, sir. Good morning. Sheriff Coach was not able to be here this morning for, so you, you got me instead. The sheriff is asking for us to upgrade two deputy's positions to invest, deputy investigators or detectives. These two investigators will be primarily assigned to track, investigate gang activity in Harney County. The past year, especially in the past few years, we've run across the majority of people we deal with, whether it's drive-by shootings, even burglaries. We find that there's some type of gang relationship with the individuals we arrest and gangs in the area. So, sheriff feels there's a need to concentrate. We've never had investigators that solely concentrate on tracking gang activity and tracking gang members. And so, that's why we got this request. We're not asking for no new money. Sadly to say that we have a right number of vacancies of deputies, and so we will take two of those positions that are vacant and upgrade them to the detective positions.
And I believe you're freezing a third position to.
Yeah, because of the increase in salary, we're gonna freeze the third position to allow funds to be available for the increase in salaries for those two investigators.
Any questions from any, any of the board members concerning this request?
I have a question. Has there been an increase in gang activity here in Harney County in the last, I would say, year? Because I know the sheriff came before us last year, asking for the same request. So.
We are, each year, we've seen, in the last few years, we've seen an increase in the gang activities. I mean, we don't see it on the surface, but when we go investigate drive-by shootings, that we've had an increase in the last few years, especially this year. When we interview the suspects or the arrestees, we find out that they're connected to a gang, even to break-ins. It's not necessarily that the gangs are ordering these things, it's just the rival that becomes between gangs and groups and territories. And it involves the drug activity, it involves larceny, it involves all facets of what we get involved in investigating crimes. And we just see more and more that they are somehow associated with gang organizations. So, we just feel a need that we need to concentrate and have two investigators that solely track those activities from within our jail and also in the county.
Any other questions, Major McNeil? If the, if it's a consensus of the board to approve this, we could put it on the consent agenda, or if it's the consensus of the board to not approve it.
Approve.
Okay. Okay, the consensus is we'll approve this if you will add it to the consent agenda, Madam Clerk. All right. All right, you wanna continue your own to the reclassification of detention officers to booking intake?
Yes, sir.
Positions?
When we first moved into the new jail some 11 years ago, we had these booking intake positions. We had four positions classified that way. Their duties was then, and we would like to have in the future, is when a deputy first comes in, brings an arrestee into the detention facility, we need to fingerprint him, run a background check, check for warrants, and do a few other administrative things with that arrestee before he's actually booked into the jail. A few years after we moved in here, we thought it would be advisable to, to change those positions to detention officers so they could assist in other functions of the jail, because they were civilian positions. So, we upgraded those four positions to detention officers. We're having trouble recruiting individuals who want to be detention officers. So, when we looked at our vacancies and then looked at our needs, the sheriff felt like that we, being an advantage for us to move those positions back to civilian positions, go back to the way we were when we first moved in, and hopefully, we can get more qualified applicants that do not wanna work in the jail, but would want to work in fingerprinting and running the background checks. It's less interaction with inmates. So, they, they'll be civilian positions, they won't be sworn positions. Their positions actually classified lower in pay grade than detention, so we're not asking for no new money. We'll just transfer to vacant detention positions and change their classification to intake personnel.
Is no one in these positions at the present time?
Sir.
Is there anyone in these positions at the present time?
No, sir.
Okay. Any questions about this, this move, this reclassification?
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
Now, there's no one in these positions at this present time?
No, no, ma'am.
Now, has there ever been anyone in these positions?
When we first moved in 2009, for two or three years, we had four positions classified this way. But we reclassified those to detention officers so we could use them anywhere in the jail. But we're just cannot find enough applicants that wants to work in jail and work anywhere in the jail. So, we're hoping, because we're limiting, changing it back to a civilian position, that we can get more applicants that want to do this particular job.
Well, there certainly is a need for, I'll be honest with you. I'm just surprised that it's, you're just bringing it to us. Totally understand it, ma'am. There is a need for it, there's been a need for it for some time, so I'm in agreement with it.
Here's the consensus of the board is to move forward with this reclassification. So, Madam Clerk, if you'll add it to the consent agenda for Monday, we will approve this reclassification at that time. And last but not least, retirement of K-9 Sadie.
Yes, sir. We've lost two of our K-9 officers to other agencies in the past year. So, the sheriff asked us to do a reevaluation of our K-9 unit. And once again, because of our vacancies, he determined that we decreased the number of K-9 personnel at this time. And with that, we, we sort of have Sadie as not having a handler. So, we're wanting to retire Sadie, and actually, one of the previous handlers has agreed that he would take her if we retire her. Sadie was donated to the sheriff's office, so there was no cost to us in, when we had pained Sadie. So, the sheriff recommendation is, is that we retire her and allow her to go back to her original handler.
Any questions from the board on this? I don't see any, any, any problem with, with this. All right, Madam Clerk, the consensus of the board is to approve this if you will add it to the consent agenda for Monday. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
All right, the, Bean, you wanna do a solid waste update?
Be glad to, sir. Mr. Chairman, members of the board, thank you for having me this morning. It's good to see everybody. It's been about a year since I had a chance to present and give you an overview of our department. So, thank you for the opportunity. I grew up in a little, small country town, and we use the term chewing your cabbage twice when you repeat yourself. So, some of this presentation, I'll be chewing my cabbage twice. But I think it's essential as to give you an overview of our department and our operations. So, another thing is, I'm very informal, so I, I encourage dialogue or any questions if you have. Feel free to just stop me in, in the middle of this presentation if you have questions, okay? So, just to give you an outline, we're gonna be talking about our mission statement, our organizational values and goals for the solid waste department, an overview of our department, operations, facilities, also our current fee structure, some tonnage reports and trends, and also some special events and programs that we have throughout the year, and then looking ahead at various challenges and opportunities. So, our mission statement is basically to, to be innovative, be responsive for our organization, for our citizens, and, and be aggressive a, as far as being environmentally sound and fiscally responsible, all while managing our waste and educating the public as far as long-term waste management practices and, and systems. Some of our values, stewardships, number, number one, we wanna be environmentally friendly. We wanna make sure we're disposing of waste properly. Customer service is right up there. We, we value that. It's one of our main priorities, to make sure we take care of our citizens and make sure it's, it's easy for them to, to dispose of their waste. Accountability, we wanna be fiscally and, and ethically accountable. And of course, we wanna do all this in a professional manner. Some of our goals, we wanna protect the public health environment. We want to decrease and deter improper waste disposal, and of course, educate community on proper solid waste management and available disposal options that we have throughout the county. I'm gonna be referring to a few acronyms, or I call them trashy terms. Municipal solid waste is considered basically your household waste, garbage that you haul out from your house, it's usually keeping in your kitchen and whatnot. Curbside pickup is considered MSW or municipal solid waste. And then another type of waste that we deal with daily is construction and demolition, also referred to as C and D waste. So, you're only as successful as the people you, you surround yourself with, and I'm proud to say we have a great team of employees. We have 21 solid waste employees, and count myself, and also one environmental deputy, which is very crucial in, in helping us on a daily basis as far as the environmental deputy cites folks, if he catches any folks that are illegally dumping, and, and gives us some teeth as far as the enforcement of our solid waste ordinance that we have. So, we have several convenience centers throughout the county, and they are strategically placed throughout the county. We have seven convenience centers. All of these sites are manned, and we contract that out with Republic Services Incorporated. They man those sites, they pull waste from those sites. And so, as you can see on the map, they're throughout the county. And I'll, I'll talk a little bit more about this a little bit later on, so I won't go too in-depth in this. I'll, I'll talk a little bit more about this later. Here's some nice pictures of our convenience centers. We take pride in keeping them clean. The attendance, we want the attendance to be very friendly, helpful to our citizens. Of course, the site on the left is Mamers, and, and the one on the right is the Johnseville-Ponderosa site, and that's one of our newer sites that we have. There's another site of our northwest, our Buckhorn site, which gets very congested. We've talked about this a little bit, and we are planning on relocating that site out on Oak Ridge River Road. So, it's, it's not very user-friendly and not very accommodating. So, we're, we're looking to relocate that site. The one on the right is the Dunn-Irwin site, that's just outside of our landfill. That's, that's our newest site, we're very proud of that. It's easy access, in and out, so that folks don't have to stand in line or wait in line at the landfill. And speaking of the landfill, here's a couple of pictures of our construction and demolition and transfer station landfills. I'll elaborate a little bit about construction, demolition, and transfer stations. So, you remember the pictures I showed you earlier as far as household waste being MSW? We are not permitted to, to accept that in our landfills at either Anderson Creek or our Dunn-Irwin location. Dunn-Erwin location. We can only accept construction and demolition materials in our landfills. So what we do is we accept that MSW, household trash, we accept that from our convenience centers, and we take that actually to the transfer stations. At the transfer station, your household trash is loaded up into transfer trucks and hauled to Sampson County landfill. So in essence, your household garbage does not stay in Harnett County, it's transported to Sampson County. Here's a couple pictures of our transfer stations, pretty simple buildings, concrete pads, nice metal structure to keep everything dry. Any leachate or water that seeps out of that building, we collect and treat accordingly. You see the picture there of a transfer station, or transfer truck, excuse me, backed in the bay there, that's literally loaded in there with our guys and then hauled away to Sampson County. Here's a couple pictures of our construction and demolition landfills, and again, Anderson Creek and Dunn-Erwin locations. The one on the left is Anderson Creek, the one on the right is Dunn-Erwin. We have to answer to the state DEQ to make sure we comply and follow all of their regulations. So we are periodically inspected at our sites and answer to them. So other items that we accept at both landfills, scrap metal, scrap tires, white goods, which are your appliances and electronics, and of course, yard waste as well. So Harnett County Solid Waste operates as an enterprise fund. We operate primarily from the availability fees, which is sent out in your tax bill, we don't like to call it a tax, we call it availability fee, and that's collected yearly, of course, as well as tipping fees. The tipping fees are charges that we collect at the scale house at each landfill. There we go. So the availability fee is a cost process for the citizens, of course, and what's covered in your availability fee? If people ask you, hey, what's this all about? That's basically the disposal of your household garbage. It's also the operation of the transfer stations, and it's also for our reserve and contingency fund. Currently, the availability fee is $80 per household, and we will not be recommending an increase in that next year, just FYI on that one. Our current fees at the landfill, that covers our operational costs, of course, disposal tax that we have to pay to the state, and of course, any capital improvements, you know, when you go to buy bulldozers, you're looking at $400, $500,000. So anytime you have to replace any equipment like that, you're looking at pretty costly items, so all of these covered in your tipping fees as well. And currently, our tipping fee for construction demolition material is $48 per ton, and yard waste is $30 per ton. Did I go too far? So most of our expenditures are through our staff services and contracted services. Our contracted services line item is the most expensive or most costly for us. GFL Industries, which manages the Sampson County landfill, that's where a majority of our fees or our funds go to cover the costs of that. Also, I mentioned Republic Services manages our convenience sites, so a large cost is involved in that as well. And then, of course, I want to go over all these on the left, but all the staff services that's included, managing basically all of our operations at the landfills and convenience sites there. So this is an interesting tonnage data trend over the last seven years, and this last year, we noticed, as you can see, and I don't have the number in front of me, and I can't read that far away, but our C and D tonnage decreased actually this year, which is odd because a lot more construction, you would think. So a lot more construction, but if I were to speculate, which can get me in trouble sometimes, COVID had a lot of folks home, a lot of folks doing DIY projects, you know, repairing decks, decided to remodel their home, and lumber cost soared, you know, the last year or so. So I think, there again, to speculate, I think a lot of it is new construction-only material, I think we're seeing in the last year or so. So I would attribute that, but of course, as you can see, our MSW, which is our household waste, continues to rise, so. And I'll talk a little bit about that with this map showing our seven locations once again. Our household garbage is going up, I just showed you that graph, and we're all concerned about growth developments in the county, and what it would mean for our convenience centers, what it means for our transfer stations, what it means in waste handling in general. We've seen an increase at our convenience centers, and I would like to say that, you know, it's rural versus urban as far as where those areas are located and the amount of trash that we're seeing brought to our convenience sites. What do I mean by that? Well, your municipalities have curbside pickup, a lot of your developments have curbside pickup. That means those folks aren't coming to our convenience centers. Those haulers are hauling directly to our transfer stations. So we have seen an uptick in our tonnage, but it's continued to be in the rural areas as far as our household trash and our convenience centers. The busiest site that we have out of all our sites is the Mamers' location, of course, and then second to that is our Ponderosa location, and third to that is Buckhorn. Notice I haven't mentioned Dunn-Erwin, I haven't mentioned Anderson Creek yet, because I think a lot of that is being curbside pickup, is, you know, they're not coming to our convenience sites, they're having curbside pickup, and it's brought to our transfer stations. Now, we're still handling the cost of disposal of all that, but we're not getting the influx at our convenience centers in those heavy populated areas. So I thought that was an interesting data showing that. The other side of solid waste is some of the other programs and special events that we host or try to make it convenient for our citizens. We have our annual household hazardous waste collection event, where folks can dispose of their paint. Paint's the number one item usually, but cleaners, pesticides, those type things that you normally can't throw away, we provide that service once a year for folks, and that's free of charge for our citizens. We also have a paper shredding event, which we have one coming up on May 14th, I think I'll have a flyer on one of my next screens here shortly. We also have litter sweep programs that we partner with Keep Harnett Beautiful, that's currently going on right now. We're excited to see the participation for that, just shy of 100 citizens participating in that, and I want to thank the administration also has supported us with that program, so thank you, sir, for that. And of course, I mentioned earlier, we work closely with the environmental officer, with sheriff's office, so shout out to them for an excellent job they do as well. And we work with DOT, if there's any items on the road shoulders, large items that they need to pick up or clean up, we have a good communication with them so that we're on the same page with them as well. This is a couple pictures of our household hazardous waste event that we hold out in front of the health department, and then our litter sweep program, which, like I said, we're ongoing right now. I hope you're seeing some trash bags out on the road shoulders right now, because that's a good sign that we're involved. This is a shredding event, this is the flyer that we've got coming out, May 14th, from 9:00 to 12:00. Paper shredding is a good opportunity to get rid of any confidential documents that you have, it's tax time, so it's maybe a good time to do some purging of documents and that type thing, and we encourage you to use this service. Future challenges, expansions at our landfill, we're continuing to try to be proactive and stay in front of the growth and the tonnages that we're seeing an increase in. You know, Anderson Creek capacity, we're looking at 15 years capacity there that we're permitted for, Dunn-Erwin, we're permitted for 30 more years, so we're pretty good there. In talking to Sampson County landfill, their capacity is 15 years, they have more land they can develop for landfills, but currently, they're permitted for 15 years, so that's, gives you an idea of long-term goals that we're looking at. And then convenience centers, I mentioned earlier, we want to make sure they're user-friendly, we want to make sure we provide good customer service, and by doing that, we want to continue to evaluate our locations, the space that we have available, and those type things that come along the way. And of course, a main concern, I know that you've had in the past and we have as well, is illegal dumping. We want to make sure we address those issues and nip that in the bud, so to speak. And then, of course, we're always looking to renegotiate our current contracts, we're sitting very well right now with our contract situation, and of course, prepare for our next year's budget. Let me go back, though, and before I take any questions, and mention this, some of the things we're looking at with our convenience centers and renegotiating contracts, they kind of go together. Our hours at our convenience center, I'm not very happy with, we're kind of all over the place, and I say that in a nice way, but there's two convenience sites that are closed on Wednesdays, there's two convenience sites that are closed on Thursdays, and it's a bit misleading and confusing. So what we're looking at doing next year, and I know there's been some concerns as well, as far as population and increased growth, one of the things we're proposing or going to be proposing next year is that we increase the hours at our convenience centers, five days a week, 7:30 to 5:30. So that would help our citizens, try to help navigate and get in front of the population increase as well. So that's one thing that we're looking into, so that's, and we do have that in our new contract with Republic Services, we do have that capability, or that, the word's escaping, but we have the, we can do that, we can do that with Republic Services, so that's currently in our current contract, that we can accept that amendment if we need to. So that may be coming down the road very soon, but I'm not quite ready to make that recommendation to you just yet. You have any questions, concerns, suggestions?
One of the biggest complaints that I get has to do with litter on the roads. You know, I don't know about the other commissioners, but I'm constantly getting calls about, you know, 210 between Andrew and Johnston County, for example, that is a trashy stretch of highway. I don't know what the answer is, but, you know, we need to do something to try to get rid of some of the litter, maybe, you know, some more trash pickups, I mean, you know, citizens getting involved doing trash pickups, maybe more stringent patrolling by the officers as they're out on the, you know, traveling around through the county, routine patrol, they see somebody litter, hey, you know, I know you'd have to go to court and all that, but hey, bust them. You bust a few of them and it'll stop a lot of them, I think.
That, sir, is a million-dollar question. How do you address roadside litter? And that's just not a Harnett County problem, that's a United States problem. I think a lot of it is, I think there's several moving parts to that. I think education and outreach in the schools is very important, which Keep Harnett Beautiful is working with. We're going out for Earth Day coming out, I think it's next week, next Friday, I think it is, for Earth Day celebrations, I think education outreach is important, DOT involvement is very important, because technically, it is their roads and their road shoulders. But I think litter sweeps are very important, I think that as well, and I think enforcement side of it, you know, to have some teeth in our rules and regulations or state laws, I think a little bit, I think it involves a lot of those moving parts, so I don't know that there's just one answer. I wish there were a magical answer for that, but I think, I think we're going the right path, and I think public education is part of it, whether it be billboards, advertisement. I know when I was a kid, the "Give a Hoot, Don't Pollute," you know, I still remember that now, so I think it's a lot of the, is a marketing-type strategy to address the situation as well. But we'll continue to fight the ways that we know how, and that's our litter sweeps, our education outreach programs, and good communication with DOT as well. There's adopt-a-highway programs that the state also has, I would encourage folks to look into that as well, and be glad to talk to anybody if they have any ideas.
Your PowerPoint presentation is, can you send that to the commissioners?
Sure, be glad to.
There was some good information in there that I'd like to be able to pick out and keep.
Thank you, yes. And of course, if you have any questions, feel free.
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
It seems to me that since we've had the virus for the last almost three years, I see a lot of bedding mattresses along the highway, and I think some advertising or something should be done to let the citizens know, you just don't own your mattress on the side of the highway. It's awful, it just looks awful, and it's in many, many areas of this county, because I'm riding in many areas of this county, in many areas of this county, and I see they just take the mattresses, the stormos out of the highway and keep moving, it's like they're throwing trash.
That is strange to me as well, I see a lot of mattresses on the side of the road, and I don't know, I don't know why.
We need to find some kind of answer if it's something about advertising, that you just don't do that.
I think your municipalities, a lot of those, that bedding that you're talking about comes from the rural part of the counties, because the municipalities, if you put it out by the road, they'll pick those, they'll pick it up.
Yeah, they will.
So, I mean, I can't imagine, instead of taking it and throwing it out in front of your house for the, you know, the trash truck to come by and pick it up, versus load it in your car or truck and carry it out in the county somewhere and throw it out, I mean, it doesn't make sense. I think it's, I think it's the rural, if there was a way to, well, you know, all they got to do is take it to the convenience center, but that might be an extra half a mile away or something.
Right.
I agree with what Commissioner McCoy said, maybe we do need a, some type of an advertising program, maybe work with HRW to get something in the order bills that go out.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
A year or so ago, we had a discussion about putting "Don't litter," anti-litter literature, working with the restaurants, like the burger places, when you would get a burger wrapped up in a wrapper, it would have anti-litter slogans on the paperwork and on the cups, let people know, don't throw your litter outside the road. You know what happened with that campaign?
I do not, sir, no, I do not. I do not, I can check into it, though.
Okay, also, we had a paid question before about if you have excess of prescription drugs, how do you dispose of those?
That's a good question, and I need to contact the sheriff's office. The sheriff's office-
We just have a drop box at the sheriff's office.
Yes. So his comment was, they do have a drop box at the sheriff's office, yeah.
One other question.
Thank you, yeah.
If a person sees mattresses and mattresses and stuff piled up beside the road-
Yes.
-or they see somebody littering-
Yes.
-do you have a phone number to call?
Yes, sir, they can call us, or they can call DOT, and we have those numbers readily available on our website, on our Keep Harnett Beautiful website as well. But usually, if I get a report, like mattresses on the side of the road and that type thing, I will contact DOT, and they will pick up those items, so.
For average citizens, who do they call? You mean, do you have a phone number?
Yes, just our local office, our solid waste office, and of course, our Keep Harnett Beautiful contact person now is Morgan Pope, and she's doing a fantastic job- doing a fantastic job, and her information is on the website as well.
Okay, thank you.
Mm-hmm.
I have another comment, too. In the past years, you could be out riding, traveling, I'm saying, traveling, and you would see signs, a fine for littering and all that. But you don't see any of those signs on the highway now. I mean, what happened to that, telling people they're going to be fined for throwing trash out on the highway?
Again, that's, that's a good question. Those signs are put up by the state, of course. Any road signs are put up by the state there. I can check with them to find out, you know, what the status is with those signs. But unfortunately, I don't, I don't have an answer for you, though, Ms. McCoy, but-
I know you don't have an answer, but I certainly would appreciate it if you would check with the state and see why we don't see these signs anymore.
Sure.
I mean, that kept littering down a little bit, but now you don't see anything. I mean, people just throwing, eating hamburgers, throw trash on the highway. And it's, something needs to be done. I don't know if there's anything you can do about it, but if DOT is the one putting those signs up, please check into that.
Sure, be glad to. I'm, I'm very optimistic. I, I think things are looking better. That's just my personal opinion. But it's, it's never where you want it, it's never where you want to be. So, but we're going to continue to strive to get there as far as roadside litter. It's always been a pet peeve of mine as well.
I'm going to say this to you. I certainly am proud and pleased with the work that you all are doing. But I have a fear that we're going to see things get worse because of the population growth here. So many people moving here in this county, and now a lot of things is going to turn. And this is one of the things I'm, I think that probably will change to some degree.
One question that, that I get, too, from citizens. As we move into the spring and fall, we have a lot of wildlife, especially deer. Who determines, I think I know the answer, but maybe you could state it for the record. Who determines who picks up? DOT or the county?
It's DOT. Yeah, it's, I've got a contact number for DOT, and sometimes I'll get a call about a dead deer or carcass on the road or-
Because I've heard, I've had people tell me they called DOT to come, you know, about a dead deer. And DOT come out and they say, oh, no, that's not in our right of way. We're not touching it.
And that could be the case.
And I said, well, then drag it in the right of way and call them again. You know, same rocket science people. I mean, really, is it, does the right of way determine who picks it up?
Yes, sir. I do believe that's, that's correct.
Okay.
I do believe that's correct, yeah. And I think it's a 60-foot right of way. I don't know that. I shouldn't state things that I'm not sure about.
I'm going to take one question from the audience.
It just occurred to me, there's only one hazardous waste pickup event per year. I'm wondering why there can't be multiple events, if there's a need or not. I always miss it. I would love to be able to-
It's a good question. It's a good question. They are very costly. They're very expensive to do. But I mean, we can do that, and we are looking at possibly having two a year, one in spring and one in the fall. But we haven't committed to that just yet. But it's a very valid point, very valid point. The thing is, you know, people are always moving out, moving, you know, and that type thing. And when they move out, if you don't have a way to get rid of that stuff in your garage, all that paint, all those pesticides and that type thing, you know, when is a convenient time? So we usually encourage people when they move out, hey, give it to your neighbor or a friend or to have them bring it to our next event, which it's, that's a very good, good question.
Anything else?
Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir.
I could, Mr. Bean, I would just like to thank you for your leadership of this department. It's on very sound financial footing. Service you're providing, I think, is, is excellent for our citizens, and I just wanted to commend you on that this morning.
Thank you very much. Appreciate that. Thank you all.
And I agree with that. Thank you, Mr. Bean.
Thank you.
Appreciate your report. We'll look forward to, you don't have to wait a year to come back. All right, we'll move to the manager's report.
Thank you, Chair. I believe clerk is bringing around the tentative agenda for the regular meeting. Number of items from today, we'll carry over, as you've mentioned, to consent. We are in the process still of pulling our numbers together with the budget. Due to this being a reevaluation year, we will be pushing back the start of our budget discussion a couple of weeks. We were looking at, normally we would probably be looking at around May 2nd that we would begin that conversation and process, and now we'll be looking at May 16th. That'll allow us to pull numbers a little deeper into the process based on appeals and other things related to the evaluations to better understand the right and correct numbers as we look at the, the revenue neutral rate and what calculation that will end up being. But process is going well. We have the requests in from the departments and a few other items that we're following, and Lisa McFadden is working hard on pulling that together. Met with Renee as well yesterday, getting some preliminary numbers. So that'll be May 16th that we'll be making the presentation, start the budget process. Tell her how.
All right. Thanks, sir. Any, anything else for any of the commissioners? I believe we do have a need for a closed session.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chair. I would move that the board go into closed session for the following purposes. To consult with the county's legal counsel in order to preserve the attorney-client privilege concerning the handling of certain litigation, including the following case, Haley Wade versus Sheriff Wayne Coates, Hornet County Superior Court, file number 22 CBS 603.
Have a motion to a hearsay.
Please.
Have a motion to second. All in favor?
Aye.
We're now in closed session. Thank you.